Take a moment to indulge John Eppert and Amy West to talk quickly about the Enchanted Forest. So please come on up and tell us what you're doing, and I know you've got tickets to pass out.
If you don't know what we're doing, I'm really disappointed. We've been here before for more than once. I'm John Eppert.
Hi, Amy West.
We are two of the three directors of Enchanted Forest. Nancy Eppert, my wife, is the artistic director. And we do this every year for a couple of reasons. First of all, we really want you all to come out, so we make it free for you to do so. So we've got comp tickets for you all. But also to thank you for the city's support for thirty-four years. This is our thirty-fourth annual Enchanted Forest. For thirty-three of those years, you know, we've been an equal partner with the city. And so we're really grateful to you for your support.
Seriously, you can't hear me?
The recording could not.
Oh, okay.
Project, use that theater voice.
Yeah, what can you say? We've had such great support. I mean, we couldn't do this the way we do without the city's help. You know, Director Hagen Deffer has helped us just sort of kind of on for as a continuum of all the help we've ever gotten from IPNL. There's a lot of the sets we can't have without their help because they set telephone poles for us and give us other things that help us. Of course, Parks and Rec, George Owens is a beautiful nature park. I encourage you, if you haven't been there, to come out. I presume that you all have. And this event, other than sporting events, I think that this event brings as many or more people into that park as it comes to any of the city parks any time in a year. We bring somewhere between three and four thousand people into that park in the four nights that it's open, plus the Thursday night that we do ahead of time, which is complimentary for anybody in the special needs community. It's just our way of sort of giving back to the community.
And we have three hundred and twelve people, families with special needs, coming out this Thursday. So it's pretty exciting.
It is. Channel nine came out the other day. They ran a thing on the news. I don't know if any of you got to see that, but that was very nice of them and very complimentary. We were happy with the way that went. So you're invited, come out, please. I'll even make sure you don't have to stand in that hour and a half long line if you do. So why don't we pass these out? If you have any questions about anything, please, you know, we'd love to answer them.
Any questions? A big thank you. Sure appreciate all the time and energy you put in.
These are for everybody that's in action.
We'll take those.
You take those.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right. Under our council sponsored items, number one, a resolution amending Resolution Number Six Nine Eight Three to remove the requirement, the core functions of governance be preserved on Historic Square to authorize public meetings, including city council meetings, to be held at the Independence Municipal Commons and align with the vision and implementation strategy of the reshaping of the Square Master Plan. Miss City Clerk, interim city clerk, I'm kicking that off to you. City manager, city clerk. Sorry about that, thank you.
No worries.
Boy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, before you tonight is a resolution that would repeal and ultimately replace the Resolution Six Nine Eight Three that, at the time, the what is now known as the Municipal Commons Facility was purchased. There was an interest by the council at that time to maintain, as it was written into this resolution, core functions of city government on the square. Circumstances and conversations have continued to evolve over the time of the redesign of the Municipal Commons Facility. And that has brought us to this resolution that's being proposed by council members, Vought and Stewart, that'll come before you in consideration of upcoming council meeting. But effectively, it would authorize city council meetings to take place at the new Municipal Commons Facility rather than here. I'm happy to answer questions, or I'm happy to turn it over to council members that are sponsoring this item.
Certainly bounces to the council members sponsoring.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So Resolution Six Nine Eight Three was adopted on February seventh, 2024, after the purchase of the Gihah Building, which is now the new Independence Municipal Commons, with the intent of keeping a form of governance on the Historic Square. I wasn't on the council at that time, but I understand that intent, preserving our city's historic connection to the square. However, it appears that that plan was never carried out, and now renovations are well underway at the new city hall, with departments to begin moving there soon. The purchase is done, and the reality is that our city operations will mostly be centralized there. This amendment simply updates the previous resolution to reflect that reality and provide clarity for where council meetings and public meetings will be located. It is clear that this move is practical, efficient, and the most cost effective. The building offers plenty of space for the staff and the public without the added costs of challenges of maintaining separate sites. If we were to find another site on the square, it would require significant costs to make it secure, accessible, and equipped for live streaming. Relying on temporary or borrowed venues like the Truman Memorial Building or the Jackson County Courthouse isn't a sustainable or long-term solution. This amendment doesn't take away from the square's importance, it simply aligns our direction with the reality of where we are finishing, where we, the direction with the reality of where we are, finishing what's already in motion in the most responsible, cost-effective way. The Historic Square will always be the heart of Independence. The history, the events, and the community pride will remain there. And I appreciate the chance to bring this forward tonight, and welcome any thoughts or feedback from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, any comments?
Mr. Mayor Protim. So certainly understand what this is about. The one question that comes to mind, in Section Two, it reads, "Public meetings of the city, including meetings of the city council, boards, and commissions, shall be held at the Independence Municipal Commons as the primary and designated location of such meetings can only be held in other city-owned facilities." Meetings can only be held in other city-owned facilities if space at the Independence Municipal Commons is unavailable due to scheduling conflicts or other unavoidable circumstances. I guess my concern in this regard is that, you know, we have boards and commissions that meet all over the city, you know, at this point. And so what this resolution is going to do then is require them, based on my reading at least, require them to meet at the Municipal Commons if it passes. And I'm not sure that was the complete intent, but that's the way I would read this. And so I guess I'm asking if that was the intent or not.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
Councilman Stier.
That was not the intent, and obviously, if that's the way it's being interpreted, that can be changed before it comes to the full council. I think my intent by sponsoring it was just city council meetings, and if the PUAB, well, I don't even know, the PUAB, once it's, they couldn't even meet at the utility center after it's been switched over, so they would probably have to go there. But I mean, it can definitely be changed, is my point.
That's helpful, I mean, to understand that. So I, you know, my concern with the overall resolution is different, but I think that if it does pass, that would help with this, to maybe take out the boards and commissions part and leave the city council part in or something to that effect. But I've got other concerns, but I'll leave that for whenever we address it on a regular meeting.
Do we want to hash out the language now, or do we want to wait until we come up to the first reading and have what the folks digest? How you interpret it is exactly how I interpret it, as being that all of these meetings will have to be held there. The street commission meets at the Well Mansion, the CBB, we meet at different locations throughout the city that may be city facilities, and other cases, they are not. So working out some of that certainly needs to be done.
I guess my recommendation would be to remove the words "boards and commissions" and, you know, but that's, that'd be up to the people sponsoring this.
I have an email somewhere on that question, but I am not being, I can't find it right now, so I'll continue to look.
Well, let's move forward, and if there's any language that needs to be changed and/or adopted prior to the first reading, we can do so at the council meeting. If that's agreeable?
Yes.
May I ask just a general question for interim city manager Reynolds?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You know, one of the reasons that we bought the landmark building is that it was newer, had better tech. The company that was in there before put all kinds of central wiring, et cetera. So I'm just making sure that the space that we would be occupying there would be capable of accepting the tech so that we can have microphones, have presentation space, be able to broadcast on our YouTube channel, just making sure.
Yes, the ability to livestream meetings is a component of this new facility. We were anticipating Planning Commission and the Public Utility Advisory Board always meeting in this building, and we stream those already, so those capabilities would already exist.
Okay. And it's, you know, we, it's always difficult to decide what part of the city serves the city best. I'm just counting in the room here. We have, I'm going to say fourteen staff, and we have five members of the public. So certainly, I think, being able to be in a different part of town won't be an enormous inconvenience, and it would be, my anticipation, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the majority of the people who would be coming to staff those meetings would be in that building already, so it'd be convenient for the staff.
All staff would be in that facility, yes.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Madam City Clerk, there's no citizen requests to speak on this matter? Great, then we will move forward. If you have any amended language, let's just get together before we have the next meeting. Under Presentations, Madam, Miss City, interim city clerk Reynolds, sorry, I'm getting used to that. We...
No worries.
Gosh, city clerk, I did that again, my gosh.
It's just fine.
Ms. Reynolds, interim city manager, I'm going to keep staring at that. Presentations, Semiannual Report of the Independence Parks Commission.
All right, I would like to invite Diane Kaiser, Chair of the Independence Parks Commission, to come provide the semiannual report.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to do this. I'm here with Mike Hicks, the Assistant Director of the Parks Commission, so, or Park Board, so Parks Department. So if you have any questions, Mike's probably a better one to answer them, but we'll do our best to address that. You can hear me okay? Okay, so part of our responsibility in the overview, let's see, hit enter, yeah. In the overview, you see the last item here, is that the commission reviewed the status of projects funded by the Parks Improvement Sales Tax. So one of our primary areas of responsibility is to kind of oversee how this is done, and so we come with it to you for the semiannual report. So the revenues, you see here, the revenues were slightly more than were expected, but not very much, but it's better to have it more than less. So this is a report of the expenses, so the budget, and then we spent less than we budgeted, so that's always good, too. The fund balances that you see here reflect what's current. And then some specifics about how those resources are actually used. So the sales tax maintenance, you can see lots of mowing and trimming goes on. Forty parks and green spaces, twenty-six playgrounds, four recreation facilities, and then all the courts and baseball, softball fields that we have, and then the trash pickup. So we maintain those parks. Weekly care in action, so you can see here how much mowing actually has to take place in all of these. Three hundred and sixty-nine acres of park green space, three hundred and ten acres of roadside green space, and we manage the athletic fields, connecting loops, the trails, and the daily challenges are vandalism, graffiti, and homelessness, and cleaning up the homeless camps. Those are really frustrating for the staff, especially the graffiti and the vandalism that takes place in the facilities, the bathrooms, you know, repeatedly. It just seems really, really difficult to get that stopped. Highlights in the field, a new playground, outdoor exercise equipment at Rotary Park, Claremont School slide, a trash truck was purchased, snow removal during the winter, the shelter roof at the Santa Fe Trail and Mill Creek Parks, and brush removal across all the trails. The core programs of recreation, arts and culture, continuing education and life skills, seniors, sports, aquatics, the splash pads, nature, special events, and wellness. Let's play Recreation in Action. So we do lots of really fun activities. The Enchanted Forest was one that was just mentioned, but that we partner with, and so you see here a list of the many different recreational activities that the community has opportunity to participate in. We did a brochure this year that we, we haven't done that for a couple of years, and so we distributed that. So it was a catalog, hopefully you've seen it around in some of the city buildings and have had access to it, and the community has used that to know what's going on. And then the partnerships that we have, there's quite a list of partnerships that we participate in with various groups in the community throughout the year. So that's, pretty much covers it, doesn't take much to, the staff does a good job of putting this together in a concise way so you can see what we're doing. But we're, I would say the commission is certainly satisfied with the way that the Parks Sales Tax Improvement has spent. So we support the staff and what the decisions that they're making. Any questions or anything?
Any questions?
Thank you. Do, what is the next CIP plan? Are there big purchases that need to be made, or next set of playground equipment that needs to be replaced?
Mike, can you help us with that?
See, I'm looking to see if I can find what's... There you are. Yes, we are putting in two new playgrounds. We got one new one going in over Benton Park, and we have a new playground going in at Santa Fe Park, and we're hoping to have those installed by Christmas. So if they get us all the equipment back, we will have them installed.
Fantastic, thank you.
Right on the corner. Any other questions? Don't hear any. Thank you very much for helping shepherd that.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds, we are now up to Semiannual Reports of the Stormwater Oversight Committee.
Well, it appears that the Chair of the Stormwater Committee is not here yet, so I am happy to run through the slides for you, or you can review them in your packet, but I've actually prepared these for several years, so I'm happy to walk you through them if that's helpful.
That would be helpful, if you wouldn't mind doing that, then we'll just follow up with questions.
We're going to weave it here. All right, I guess I can... Okay. The October report is a look back at the previous fiscal year, so this is fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The budgeted total anticipated for this stormwater sales tax was five point six million. So again, a budget number, this is what we based all budget presentations on. This next slide shows the actual revenue brought in in each of the categories. So we brought in just over five million with the sales tax alone. The use tax, as you can see, was higher than the anticipated four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, coming in at four sixty-four and change. Interest income is always where we see the greatest deviation from budget. We like to be very conservative when we budget that number, never knowing what financial markets are going to do. So usually, when we're over, that's the area we're over, and that holds true again this year. So budgeted one hundred and sixty-four thousand came in at five hundred and thirteen. Overall, compared to the five point six budgeted, we came in at six point two million for the total for the sales tax. Again, this is a quarter cent sales tax, the other half of what was approved for the Parks Ballot Initiative. The allocation of funding breakdown is here for your reference. So maintenance is just as it sounds, the maintenance and operation of the system. The storm system is roughly two hundred and thirty-five miles of pipe and nearing fifteen thousand structures, so field inlets, curb inlets, outfalls, and things like that. As you can imagine, it takes quite a bit of staff time to just simply maintain and inspect those structures, which would be the maintenance, the primary maintenance activities. We do some in-house repair as well, and then also on the CIP side, some larger things that we contract out for repairs and replacements and linings. Administration, just again, the administrative side, not actually out in the field. And then the permit compliance, that is pretty much exclusively our contract with the USGS, and that is basically our creek walking program. So every year during the summer, we have consultants come in and walk with staff looking for illicit discharges, and we designate a different body of water every year. And they're looking and doing testing on things like, is there, are there chemicals in the water that shouldn't be there, but then also on the biological things that are in the water. If there happens to be fecal coliform in the water, is it human or is it animal? Because these things help us with regulatory issues that come down the road later that we can argue that's either, yes, that could be a problem with our treatment plant, or no, that's actually an agricultural issue that needs to be addressed with ag industry instead of sewer treatment facilities. So that is the primary reason that we do that, and then finding illicit discharges is the added bonus of being able to address those and get those cleaned up if and when we find them. So in the total operating budget of three point nine million, and then the rest of the nearly six million is capital. That number looks very large. You'll see noted there thirteen million, that is not over budget, that is rolling in previous year projects that have yet to be completed. Also in that number is quite a bit of grant funding, because for the first time in my time here, we were awarded just over ten million dollars in ARPA grant funding, and those projects are actually ongoing. Again, maintenance operation, we've already talked about this, oh, plus the nineteen regional detention basins that we take care of. And this is just a maintenance summary comparison year to year. It's not always an apples and apples to comparison, it's a good thing, metrics that we check internally, but sometimes we have, you know, more things in a wet year or extremely dry year in pipe shift, we have more maintenance than inspection. So sometimes it may look lighter in one particular maintenance task, but that's because we were concentrating on another one. And then we move into capital. So again, talk about ARPA projects, this is the Rock Creek Watershed. There are actually two phases of this. This piece is ninety percent complete, and this project alone was five million dollars to replace corrugated metal pipe in the Rock Creek Watershed. We have, I haven't run the numbers for a couple of years now, but multi-millions worth of corrugated metal pipe in the ground that is failing faster than we can possibly keep up. So to have five million dollars to dedicate to one watershed in town was quite a saving grace. There's also the Rockwood Storm Improvement Project. This is also an ARPA-funded project, eighty percent, and is fifty percent complete. Again, you can see how we add to our stats and how the, that needs to be updated routinely. This just project alone adds another eighteen hundred feet of pipe. And again, Rock Creek Watershed Phase One, that is all completed now, another eighteen hundred feet of pipe. And then we also, a few years back, had to create Emergency Repair Project Fund within the capital projects. That started the year, I don't know if you remember, at the Forty Second Street culvert failure, where we started having culverts that would fail and take a lane of traffic with them occasionally. We had Bunchu, we've had Allen Road, several of these have happened lately, and that's what these repair funds are to address. Bunchu Road happens to be on this list, but we, this year, this last year was Trencher, Bunchu, Lexington and Nolan, and Saddle Ridge. Completed project, Raymond Hartless, Harkless to Mills, eighty percent, again, grant funded by ARPA. So this, these numbers are over the life of the sales tax. So over twenty-five year period, we've done over fifty million dollars in capital projects. We have ten point five million in ARPA grants, have completed a hundred and twelve projects, and that number's actually really misleading because we bundle projects a lot, and so that includes bundled projects. So sometimes the neighborhood projects, and we do the same thing on sewer, that actually is, could be anywhere from five to ten projects just packaged together. And have completed thirteen watershed studies in our twenty-three watersheds, and there's our current totals, fourteen in design or acquisition and construction. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Reynolds?
I guess I should have mentioned that the committee did vote to approve this, even though they're not here.
Thank you. Not hearing any.
Question? Thank you. So you mentioned that on your previous slide that you have six projects that are...
Designer construction.
Six programs, okay, and then eight projects in the design phase. Can just give you a couple of highlights from that, just so people know what to anticipate?
Sure, so design phase arguably takes the longest. It's the piece that we send out to engineers to actually design where the pipeline goes. It's also where we'll do, well, acquisition is in six. So they tell us what easements we need to obtain to do the work. They do the actual design and calculations of how much water will be captured, and all the details of what problems the project will solve. When it goes into acquisition phase, that's when we go out and obtain the easements. We come to you for easement acquisition authority, go out and get those from the homeowners affected by these projects, and then once we have all that obtained and sealed up, then we move into construction phase and do the actual project.
So do you have, like, major, we're going to be working on this replacement or that spot? I'm just, for people in the neighborhood who are like, what are you working on next time?
Mike Jackson is here as the director. He may have a more updated project list for you. It is part of the capital improvement document that's approved every year, because we do, we do a five-year outlook on all those, and all those projects are included. But I can tell you that we had at least the next eight years of projects already programmed out for the sales tax.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any. Thank you. So up next, Semiannual Report of the Street Improvement Oversight Committee.
Our Chair, Wes Epperson, is here to provide that report.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm Chairman of the Street Improvements Oversight Committee. I'll be giving this report for the committee. Show me this. Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, I have John Powell, LaBette Oada, Marcy Gregg, and Pam Wishon as the committee members. We got a couple of vacancies also that we need to get filled. We monitor the use of the street sales tax and now the GEO bonds. This was a sixteen-year program, started in 2009. Voters approved renewal and made permanent the street sales tax in 2017, and voters approved the GEO bond funding for bridges, sidewalks, the schools, and preventative pavement maintenance in April of 2025. Street sales tax. That shows our revenue sources. The street sales tax revenue was just right at budget. We had nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars of use tax. And the interest income was significant, over eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So for the current year, revenue was fourteen million, eight hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. This shows the allocation of the funds, the budget numbers, the encumbrances, and the expenditures. Total allocation of funds was twenty-three million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, and thirty-six dollars. This is a summary of the street operations. This is a summary of the street operations. Fiscal year 2025 total, street sweeping was 464 lane miles. The, that was resulted in a collection of 1,437 cubic yards. Illegal dumping was, that part of that was 2,172 cubic yards. Traffic signs repaired, 1,688. Potholes repaired, a little over 15,000. Snow operations, over 10,000 hours clearing the streets. Snow operation treatments, over 3,000 tons of salt and 40,750 gallons of brine. And partial and full-depth street patching was over 5,555 square yards. Completed projects, 24 Highway Complete Streets, Phase Two. That project started, that design was consultant was Burns &amp; McDonald. The construction start date was 2023, administered by MoDOT. It was completed in summer of 2025. It was a MoDOT cost-share project. It ran, this phase of the 24 Highway was from Sterling Avenue east to River Boulevard, and it included new sidewalks, curb and gutter, and pavement, with a 10-foot multi-use path on the south side and 5-foot sidewalk on the north side. It also included storm sewer and tra- traffic signal improvements. The estimated total project cost was $6,561,483, or 561,483. The next project was Little Blue and Jackson Drive intersection improvements. That contract was carried out by Lionel Weaver Construction, a little over $1 million. Construction began spring of '25, substantially completed in summer of '25. It was eligible for reimbursement through the Governor's Cost Share Grant and North Point reimbursement. That included new curb and ADA-compliant sidewalks, improved signals, median removal, lane additions. Total estimated cost was a little over $1 million. The Truman Depot and Pacific Trail Improvement. That contract was awarded to Terry Snelling Construction, $1.4 million, $1.5 million, we'll call it. Construction began spring of '23. Substantial project completion will be fall of '25. That was a cost-share project with Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department. Building restoration was done, improvement for the historic Amtrak Station. That was $618,771. Street Improvement provided complete street upgrades on the north side of West Pacific to South Pleasant Street. That cost was $870,991. It included new curb, ADA-compliant sidewalk, pavement marking, signage for shared use, and shared use lanes and bicycle users. That, TAP funds provided that, $350,000. They provided $350,000. Total estimated project cost was $1,672,360. The East Heidelberg Road Bridge Replacement. That construction contract was awarded to Wideman Construction at $325,360. That project began August '25, substantial completion October of '25. That project was removal and replacement of existing bridge culvert structure at 27101 East Heidelberg Road with a new bridge and culvert. Total estimated project cost $325,360. That brings us to under construction. Pavement preventative maintenance. We're entering the fourth year of the alternate maintenance program, funded by current budget street sales tax. This includes a blend, a blended approach with seals, which is, includes micro-surfacing, crack, fog, scrub, and cape seals. Previous year's completed since adopting blended approach. Two, over 243 lane miles. Last three fiscal years, average 86, almost 87 lane miles. Crack filling, 18 lane miles. Roadway seals, 39 lane miles. Overlay was almost 30 lane miles. This current, current fiscal year was 70.84 lane miles. 2025 crack filling was over 20 lane miles. 2025 overlay was almost 20 lane miles. And 2025 pavement seals is over 30 lane miles, and that's still in progress. Fiscal year '26, locations are being finalized. Square streetscape, Phase One. Construction contract awarded to Fahy Construction Company. Current contract, $2,783,940. Construction began early '25. Estimated substantial completion fall of '25. That was a fully funded federal grant project. Sidewalk, curb and gutter, pavement, storm sewer, electrical, lighting, landscaping, and hardscaping. There was also a bicycle lane along Main and Lexington installed. New traffic pattern and parking layout. Estimated total project cost $3,727,497. Vale sidewalks, Phase Two, and 31st Street sidewalk improvements. This contract was awarded to Lionel Weaver Construction at $490,695. That construction began in October '25 and completed, will be completed fall of '25. Vale sidewalks, Phase Two, new curb, ADA-compliant sidewalks on West Jones, North Main, and West Second Street South. 31st Street improvements, new curb and ADA-compliant sidewalks on 31st Street from Castle Park Elementary to Northern Boulevard. Total estimated project cost $490,695. Lot of projects here. Truman Connected, Phase One. Design consultant, WSP. That bid was opened October '25. That will include sidewalk, curb, and gutter, pavement marking, storm sewer, landscaping, hardscaping improvements. There'll be a shared use, use path, beginning at the Truman Library, crossing through the square, terminating at the entrance to Inglewood Arts District. STP funds provided are $3,200,000. Estimated total project cost will be $4 million. Now, future capital improvement projects will, is budgeted for $31,989,781. Approximately $49.7 million will be covered in expected grant reimbursement. That is, includes 12 projects in design phase. These are the projects that are in, in the design phase. You'll see 23rd Street Mobility and Safety Project, Truman Connected, Phase Two. 23rd Street Complete Streets, Phase One, Two, and Three. 24 Highway Complete Streets, Phase Three. Historic Trails, Phase One, Fairmount Loop Trail, the Winter Ru- Winter Road Complete Streets Sidewalk Program, Nolan Road Multi-Modal Corridor in the Inglewood Traffic Circle, and Winter Road Streetscape. Geo-bonds. Our committee's been given oversight of the street bridges, sidewalk bond overview. That was approved by the voters, $55 million in geo-bond funding, and that was approved in April of 2025. And Fund Number 54 has been established for the purpose of tracking the geo-bond funds separately from all other city funding. Geo-bond plan funding and expenses. The geo-bond for, expenses for bridges is budgeted at $15 million. The geo-bond for sidewalks budget is $10 million, and the geo-bond pavement maintenance budget is $30 million, and that will total $55 million, which was passed That bond is already been put to use. Crissler Avenue over Union Pacific Railroad Bridge and the East Kentucky Road Bridge over Mill Creek. That construction contract was awarded to Lewis Company. Crissler Avenue Bridge is bid at $2,466,740. The East Kentucky Road Bridge is $1,130,472. That contract total is $3,596,546. That construction begins in October. The completion date for the Kentucky Road Bridge is early '26, and the Crissler Avenue Bridge completion is summer of '26. That will include bridge redecking and structural repairs. Now, we have other bridges in design phase. That's Kentucky Avenue over Rock Creek Bridge, the RD Mize over Little Blue River Bridge, the Arlington Avenue over Rock Creek Bridge and the Lake City Valley Road Bridge. Sidewalks to schools. Staff has met with local school districts to determine priority locations for seven potent, potential projects. Two initial projects are moving forward, and those will be at Castle Park Elementary School and Mill Creek Elementary School. Pavement preventative maintenance, $6 million annually will be spent for five years, which will total $30 million. All funds will be utilized for mill and fill overlay. Fiscal year '26, locations are being finalized. And that's the end of the report. Hope you all are still awake. If you've got any questions, you can ask me. I've got Mike or Lisa. She can handle that much better than I can. Any questions?
Two good choices there. Any questions?
I, yeah, what a shock. I just want to be sure I really understand this. This may be a question for interim city manager, Lisa Reynolds. First question is, we have future plans for $31 million and yet are expecting $49 million in grant reimbursement. I assume that's for projects that we have already completed plus some that are going forward. Yes?
Correct. We, in the capital funds for, just like Stormwater, we continue to roll in year over year, those projects. It's actually why we created, for the first, this would be the first budget cycle where we pulled out and created separate capital funds for each of the utility and special sales tax funds to try and track that a little better. And because so many of these projects are multi-year, for the 24 Highway obviously has been a multi-year project, Truman Connected, all these that take so much time. And then the grant dollars roll in, in a reimbursement mechanism, so it's not given to us upfront as a not-to-exceed. It's, we get up to that amount and only on a reimbursement basis.
Okay. And just for clarity, the $6 million from the geo-bond is for milling and overlay with those smooth, beautiful roads. This isn't chip and seal?
Correct. The ballot language said we could only use the 6 million, the pavement maintenance money in the, approved by the voters for full and partial depth repair and overlay. So, no seals are part of the geo-bond. And just as added information, since these slides were assembled, the first geo-bond list is currently out to bid and set to open, I believe, on the 25th or 28th of this month.
And we will be publicizing which roads are going to get the mill and overlay?
We will. We need to assemble a map. Right now, it's an Excel spreadsheet list. Need to create the map that goes along with that and get it up on the city's website.
Fantastic. And you'll share that with us, so we can share that with our constituents?
We will.
Appreciate that.
And I would just add that this report was presented to the Street Oversight Committee on October 1st, and we reviewed it and accepted it. Thank you. Thanks for the help, Lisa.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor Protim. This may, this is probably a question for either Ms. Reynolds or Mr. Jackson. The, on the, this past year, the actual to-date number, there was an, another revenue item of almost $3 million. I'm just curious what that was. Was that grants or was that?
I'm trying to see what's...
I'm on slide 38.
Slide 38 on the... I only have 29 in the presentation.
I have, I only have 29.
Well, I'm on slide, slide 38 of the, I'm sorry, of the, of the PDF, so I don't know what number it is. It's back towards the beginning of the...
Can you tell me what it says?
Like the fifth slide in.
Or other revenues?
Yeah. And the revenue sources, right there. Other revenues.
Yeah, slide number five.
Oh, yeah, that's grant, those are grant dollars.
Those are grant dollars, okay.
Actually received. So, those are, those are grant dollars we've actually been reimbursed for already.
Okay, all right. And I just noticed we didn't budget for any, and, and we had a lot, so that's why I just make sure.
Again, we try and be overly conservative, probably to a fault with these, but there are so many necessary street projects out there, and they continue to come in over engineers' estimates, just in, because escalation is still absolutely a factor, that by the time just going through the design phase, they've gone up another percent or two, which, when you're talking about millions, makes a difference. So, we try to be hyper-conservative on the budgeting side.
Got it. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I do have one regarding Kentucky Avenue Bridge over Rock Creek. So, that's in the design phase. That's been out for quite a while, so exciting to see it on the list. I'm obviously assuming that we're doing all the supporting documents, because it's literally in half Kansas City and half in Independence.
So, we've been in conversations with Kansas City about annexing the parcels associated with that, so we never have to have this argument again. We're working with a couple members of their staff to do the... We're working with a couple members of their staff to do the necessary paperwork. Unfortunately, that's a fairly lengthy process. But as I know, several of you have met with your counterparts in Kansas City and certainly staff at this point has stated that they're not going to do anything. They don't have resources to dedicate to this bridge. It is on us and it impacts our residents. So rather than only fixing the half that is in Independence, we're looking to annex the entire parcel and go ahead and fix the entire bridge.
Are those conversations going well with Kansas City on the counters there?
They're moving. Again, it's kind of a tedious and lengthy process, but our engineering staff continues to provide every document that they've asked for.
Just for clarification, so Councilman McCandless, I met with our city manager and our deputy city manager Adam Monors at the time, I don't know, about three years ago? It was not well received for a whole bunch of reasons and stuff. So I'm glad we're finally on the right track here, so.
Trying to move it along. It definitely impacts not only our residents, but our operations at the Rock Creek Pump Station as well.
True. Thank you. So let's move on to the semi-annual report for Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee.
All right, we would like to have the committee member, Mr. Bruce Frakes, come forward to present this presentation.
Just what? So anyway, my name is Bruce Frakes. I'm the co-chair of the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee. And we are going to, first off, I wanted to say if the council will indulge, welcome to the new interim chief, Brinkley. I think that's to be recognized. And I thank Chief Dustman for his, all of his leadership and the time he was here. He had quite a tenure at the police department. Our committee consists of Brad Mudd, who's the chair, Bruce Frakes, that's me, is the co-chair, Aaron Boatwright, Patrick Casey is there also, Tara Cruz. And we have a new commissioner, Charlene Gray. And I think that we have one opening so that we're looking to fill a possibility there. Our program overview is to monitor and use of the, to monitor the use of the tax, taxes devoted to public safety, the expenditures of public safety, and taxes are to review by the public for the Safety Tax Oversight Committee. Each quarter reports and reviews are provided and guidance given to ensure that public funds are spent in a fiscally sound manner following the guidance of the ballot language and the city charter and the city policies and the state mandatory requirements. We'll do fire department project updates. We can see there, there's quite a page, quite a list of accomplishments. The fire department's going to continue to work towards the objectives and the standards of cover community risk and assessment to the master plan for the fire department, new stations, new upgrades, rebuilds, staffing, and then the other considerations for the department. The update, capital outlay, five-year plan to account for the tax changes from some of those votes we had, not so much for the fire department, but for law enforcement. Creation and reorganization of fiscal budget for the sales tax to stay in compliance with the ordinance. The budget's going to require some adjustments so that the transparency of the tax dollars are better tracked by different requirements as that changes. Bring the staffing levels up to meet the full staffing with existing apparatuses. They've, we've been able to approve to advance here. Begin construction of Station Eight, Station Five, and Eleven, as well as determine locations for future replacement or new station needs, property acquisitions that could be involved in it, and continue to evaluate the staffing for the stations that we, that the departments do project work on. Some of the, let's see if that's, the fire department project update. So they've got two pumpers ordered that are coming in the fall of 2025. A one pumper ordered October to be, I think, come in October of '26. The station design process as conceptual design done for Station Five and Station Eleven. And the funding mechanism was decided based on the bonding. So the finalizing the design for the station number eight, training and storage building. And then the projects in the process is a one pumper order to be delivered in the fall of 2027. And the station number one, the west side of the parking lot, to be upgraded. It's, I think there's a lot of traffic there and it's better for the entrance for how they, that station one uses as a headquarters. So beginning July 1st, 2024 to June 30th of 2025. And then it's going to show the July 1st of 2025 to August 31st of 2025. So the beginning, sitting on about $12 million, just shy of $12 million. And at the, July, June 30th, as I read through what they ordered, pumpers and station design and all that, the water, you see the waterfall use tax, $877,000. Anyway, the unassigned fund balance is $16,645,670. The beginning balance in the 2025-26 unassigned fund is right at $16.6 million. And the unassigned fund balance for August 31st is about $16.2 million. Those are, the total, the personnel for that is part of that cost as in the six chief officers and 17 firefighters. There are four different reports for the IPD that are reviewed by the Public Safety Tax Oversight, the Public Safety Sales Tax Report, the Use Tax Prop P Report, the Marijuana Tax Report, and the Prop PD Tax Report. And so the Independence Police Department Public Safety Tax, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th of 2025. The beginning balance is $2.1 million. The sales tax collected is, tax collected is 2.8. The adjustments from canceling some of the POs, $1.347 and $290. And then for the year ending, unassigned fund balance is $3,037,426. For the beginning of the 2025-26 is $3,037,000. The waterfall tax from that, at that point was zero, but the revenue to date's $3.5 million. And then the current unassigned is about $3.1 million on the unassigned for that, the police department budget. And the significant purchases for the police department are the, they had to do a lot of work on the firing range for safety. Range of disposal and led the replacement of 57 computers, 27 monitors, 55 Panasonic mobile data terminals with accessories, officer uniforms and small equipment, body armor, duty ammo and force, force-on-force training ammo. Motorola, there's a myriad of things here they do to keep, to the state-of-the-art police force that we have here in Independence. Some significant purchases to the date for '25 and '26, 15 HPZ books, open blanket POs for officer uniforms and armor, 40 cold fire extinguishers for vehicles deployment. The upcoming significant expenses coming through that police, the police department budget is going to be the subscription for 59 Panasonic MDTs, vehicle equipment installs. Three of 10 years for the Axon contract, partially covered by that use tax they passed. Additional transfers out to the Justice Center project owners, the rep services, new Bearcat and the large command center. They have the one that you guys, I think we did a tour of and showed the van. And then there's a bigger command center they can use in a, as if it's needed, a bigger command center with the same advanced technology, state-of-the-art. The Use Tax Prop P, the beginning balance for '24 and '25 is just shy of $5 million. It's the 4.9. Interest on investments, $186,000. Interest investment earnings, I mean. So the total revenue was 9.8, 9.8. And then the expenses were 6.252. And for the year of 2025, there was three point, that's the unassigned balance is 3.5 million, just right at 3.6 actually. So beginning fund balance for '25 and '26 is 3.6, just shy of 3.6. Taxes collected is a million, right at a million one. Interest there on the, interest earnings is $20,000. And the total expenses was a million one. And then the current unassigned fund balance for that fiscal year is 3.5, just shy of 3.6 million. So the marijuana, yeah, the marijuana tax from July 2024 to June 30th of 2025. The beginning, 2024 unassigned fund balance, $277,076. Sales tax collected is $928,121. Investment income, $18,000. Total for the year would be 1.2 million. And ending unassigned, so the transfers out, and that's Justice Center project, was $900,000. I wanted to make sure to include that. And ending unassigned for '24, '25 is $326,120. So beginning for 2025 and '26, unassigned fund is $326,120. And you see the taxes collected there, about $140,000. The revenue's going to be about $470,000. Animal services in there at $6,709. So unassigned fund balance on August 31st of '25 is $462,690 bucks. Prop PD tax, beginning 2024, zero. And the tax collected through the, through June 30th was about 2.6 million. Use of the windfall, tax windfall is $569,000. The total revenue was 3.2 million, just shy of 3.2. And there was an expense from the start-out. It shows 2 million in the red. And then the year ended, the market adjustment was $416 bucks. So it shows the unassigned fund balance on the 2024-25 is 1.1 million, just a little over that. And then we'll move on to the beginning of '25, '26 is 1.1, that same number. Sales tax collected on that new is $962,986, zero on the windfall, tax windfall. Transfers from the general fund, $6 million, right there, $6 million. Total revenue, $8 million. Total expenditures, $7.6 million. And then at the unassigned fund balance, $519,049. That's the Prop PD tax. And I think that is it. If it wasn't too fast, I apologize.
That was perfect. There's a lot going on right there. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilman Stewart.
A question for interim city manager Reynolds. I think it said $900,000 was used out of the marijuana sales tax for the Justice Center project. Was that right?
Yes.
How much more are we expecting to use out of the marijuana sales tax for that project?
So there are a couple different pieces. And which piece comes out of which of these funds? I would, I need to do a deeper dive onto, and I can provide that to the full council. But the current renovation total price is roughly $5 million. And then the ongoing repayment of the Justice Center, the new Justice Center to the utilities will be an ongoing cost in these. So while the fund balances look higher than I expected to see, at least in the report, do know that the transfer out to pay for both the renovation and the building are still yet to come out, as well as full payment for the Mobile Command Center and the Bearcat are still in these fund balances that those transfers out haven't been completed as well. So I can get with staff and review all of those numbers and see what the actual totals, once those encumbrances are completed, would be and provide updated balance, fund balances.
Okay, thank you.
As a commission to finalize, we have approved the reports they've submitted. It's been a pleasure to work with them. Their chief, or the interims have been very responsive and straightforward. And I think it's, shows a pretty good stewardship of their finances in these departments. But we have voted as a commission to approve as they were submitted.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Bruce, thank you so very much. And that brings us to our semi-annual report of the Annual Animal Welfare Committee.
And I would like to introduce the Chair of the Animal Welfare Committee, Cody Atkinson.
Just spacebar. All right. So this is the Prop P Use Tax Report. It is split between the animal shelter, the police department, and then waterfalls into other departments. Background, it was approved by voters in August of 2019. 50% of the funds up to $750,000, plus increases in line with Consumer Price Index. So as the Consumer Price Index has risen, so has the allocation of that money into the shelter. So it will be higher than that $750,000 that was initially decided on in August of 2019. Collection began in January of 2020. And then the oversight is performed by the Animal Welfare Committee. This is a new iteration of the Animal Welfare Committee consisting only of Independence residents. I chair the committee. Tamara Huff is the vice chair. And we have some really incredible members also in Linda Humphrey, Linda Pringle, Rachel Ice, Ted Luce, and Terry Hoflicker. Revenues and expenditures here for this past year and to next year as well. Use tax collected for '24, '25 is $893,000. Again, that is because of the Consumer Price Index adjustment. So that's why it's over that $750,000. And for '25, '26, we are at $520,000 basically. Expenditures, we have at $687,000 for salaries and benefits and $222,000 for operating expenses. The year-to-date for '25, '26, we've got negative $126,420 and negative $1,963. But that'll be recouped as we move into it, so it's not all that negative. You will notice that if you add up the expenditures past the collection, that the expenditures do exceed that collection, but we also receive funding through the Recreation Health Fund Property Tax. So that is why we are able to be a little bit beyond. The Animal Welfare Committee, we met last month, reviewed this. Christina has done a really good job of explaining all of this to us and has done a really excellent job with the revenue that we receive. And it was in the opinion of the members of the Animal Welfare Committee that the items and individuals funded by the Prop P Use Tax are in keeping with the program's intent and that the Use Tax program is critical in supporting the work of the shelter. And, oh, I thought there were, weren't there? I thought there was some information on volunteer hours and, oh, gotcha. Well, just a side note, we do have quite a few volunteer hours, but we could always use more. So Wednesday at 5:00 PM, Saturday 9:00 AM, our volunteer trainings, they take about an hour, hour and a half. Could really use extra support.
Well, thank you, Cody. Any questions, comments? Don't hear any. Thank you for shepherding that. This leads us to our Boards and Commission Report. Madam City Clerk, do we have anything?
A recommendation has been made to appoint Carly Young to the Sustainability Commission. A recommendation has been made to appoint Carly Young to the Independence Arts Council. And a recommendation has been made to appoint Stacy Carlson to the Board of Adjustment. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting appointing these individuals to those boards.
Any questions regarding that? Please proceed with that. Well, that concludes our study session tonight. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, the new interim city manager. Thank you very much. We'll conclude it. Good evening.